Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order for Thursday, April thirteenth. The first item of business that we need to just to take care of is to designate a shorter period of time for the availability of nominating papers to fill the vacancy that just occurred with the resignation of Brendan Riordan. We have a motion before us. Would somebody make that, please?
I move to designate a shorter time period for the availability of nomination papers to fill a vacancy for one Select Board and Overseer of the Poor for a term ending June two thousand nineteen, per thirty A M R S A, section twenty-five, twenty-eight, four E.
Second. Moved and seconded. Effectively tomorrow morning, nominating papers will be available at the Town Clerk's Office for the remaining two years of the term that Brendan Riordan had.
And when will they be due?
And they will be due on the twenty-eighth, close of business, April twenty-eighth, five P. M. That's two weeks from tomorrow.
Do we want to just for kicks, just do a preamble to that, you know, that we regret to announce officially at a meeting that Brendan has?
I was, I was going to do that at our April twenty-fourth meeting, but because that was a regular meeting. I didn't think to put it into this one. I'd already put it into the next one.
Coming out like a free train.
Okay, next week, next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. So, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. We also need to appoint a person to take over the duties that he had on signing the weekly warrants. I know you were the backup, but you're already...
I do the dump. I did the solid waste. I gotta go in there every week.
I nominate Mr. Jeff Parker to be the designated representative to sign the weekly or the warrants.
When do they, when do they sign them?
These days, looks like.
Usually Thursdays.
Does Fridays work?
You, you and I can, we can, we'll tag team.
I, I, I think between the two of you, you can cover it. Because typically I have Fridays off, which works out, and so the solid waste corporation's been able to bump it up, because usually they're ready Wednesday, Thursday, but I just don't...
You're gonna be going to Fridays and Saturdays very soon.
Yeah, so we'll just...
Right. I think, I think they had worked it out, that Jeff is gonna try and cover it and spare you from having to do it. You're busy.
Well, you're still the backup, too.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm happy to be the backup, and I may have to start working on some agreement with the solid waste people, too, just 'cause I don't wanna have to not have the boys and girls not get paid.
Yeah. So, um, further discussion, the nomination has, was that seconded?
It was not.
Would you second it?
Uh, second. It's been moved in now, seconded. All in favor? That is unanimous. I move the, for an adjournment of this meeting.
Move to adjourn this particular meeting.
Second. All in favor?
So confused.
That meeting, this special meeting, has been adjourned. We will now, I will now call the meeting for the purpose of library discussions to order. Um, just, I gotta get the right paper here. Public comment, excuse me. We request that public comment be related to the Select Board discussion with Dick Reed on Tuesday, and any of the implications that may be raised or you think have been raised by that discussion. Does anyone wish to make public comment? Would you please step to the microphone?
I wasn't here Tuesday night because I was entertaining our son and his wife and our four-month-old granddaughter. We're here from the Czech Republic, and I really, as much as I love the library, thought that was, that's a priority.
You were in the better place.
My heart was in the right place. But I did watch Wednesday, yesterday. My first comment that it was, and I wrote this, so I'll try to be short, was wonderful, after all the time and meetings since the vote, to have three knowledgeable, professional library people at the table for discussion about the library. As a second-term member of the Library Committee, former member of both the Steering and Ad-Hoc Committees, I was fully cognizant of how important it is to have library experts be a major part of any discussion or decision-making progress about a library built. And I was in full agreement with Dick and Cynthia about some steps needed before this process goes forward. The need to know why the vote failed, and I was upset, throwing things at my computer, in terms of the discussion there, because Dick and Cynthia brought that up, Dick brought it up a number of times. You guys got to the point of a survey to do that, and then I got upset again, because the idea of taking that survey, handing it out only to those people voting in a June election, which is generally around twenty-five to thirty percent of the registered voters, not even residents, I think is totally undemocratic and unfair. And if cost is an issue to do a survey for the whole town, for all the residences, I think back on the hundred-and-twenty-fifth, something was used called Every Door Direct, which included all the post office boxes in West Rockport and the Village, as well as a direct mailing. And the cost of that was approximately five hundred dollars. At this point, if that's the issue holding this board back, after all the money that's been spent on this library project already, Alan and I have talked it over, and we would happily make the five hundred dollar donation to cover the cost of doing that survey. My comment in question is, and was, at the Tuesday night meeting, the elephant in the room, as far as I'm concerned, is that folks who want a library that provides accessibility, and accessibility does not equal parking spots, that serves all library users and represents the library, needed to accommodate current usage and programs, do not see, still do not see that current site as adequate. The same people feel, felt, that the selection process promised by the Select Board did not happen. And then, just going on to number two, perhaps a mediation step can resolve that. Paul and Cynthia mentioned, in all their years of experience, the thirty-some libraries they'd built, or designed, even Cape Elizabeth, they had never seen the kind of acrimony that they saw in this town. They just never seen it. I think Dick mentioned the only thing that he'd seen anything close to it was affordable housing on Peaks Island. And that they felt, or I had the feeling, Dick said, that if a successful vote was to happen, there needs to be some form of mediation to bring these two sides together, because there are still definitely two sides who are, if you put this up a little smaller, a little cheaper, my own personal take is it'll still go down. And also, Paul Charbonneau, who's here, had also suggested, oh, last fall, that a mediation process might be helpful. The other thing that Dick addressed was a good library. There might well come a point with further compromise and reduction in program space to reduce cost, that a bond would be passed and a new library would be built. But, there's a difference between building a new library and building a good library, as Dick addressed. And he did address that whole concept of how hard Ben and those architects, that team, has worked on the program space. And my own, and I watched it a couple of times, take from what he was saying, was that you'll reach a point in trying to pass a bond where you don't have a good library. You have a library, and you've thrown money out the window. And I, and I guess I had a question on that. With cost to taxpayers, a constant complaint, why couldn't a bond be floated not to exceed, say, one point five, one point seven-five, regardless of the cost of an adequate building, with the rest of the money raised by private fundraising? When I was traveling around the state as a president of Friends of Maine Libraries, to places that we're building, there were a number of libraries that raised, a lot less affluent towns than this one, that raised more than half of the money they needed. It took them, some of them, two or three years to do that. But where does it say the taxpayers' share has to be fifty percent of the total cost of the library? So that was, that was one of my other questions. The other thing was the timeline. I, and that one I got a little confused about, in terms of, oh dear, I left my other, my third paper is missing, but I can probably wing it. When he talked about time, I had the feeling, and, you know, it got a little confusing, because I'd been on the Ad-Hoc Committee, and we met with them so often, and there was, with the whole team and all the experts. But I felt, I felt he said, even to pick up the process, if he were to be the person, if Reed and Company were to be the architects, that he would advise the, up to a year, to complete, to complete the process, especially if he started with the survey and the mediation. That, for me, I also felt, one of the great things about their appearance, is that, for the first time since serving on both the Steering Committee and the Ad-Hoc Committee, I felt someone was giving that committee the recognition of the tons of hours and time we spent exploring that issue. I know Bill has thanked us, and, but I, I just felt Dick really reiterated what that process was like. And the idea of, and I didn't understand that totally, the idea of having the construction manager early on to help with the cost, I thought was a brilliant idea, but we didn't have that time. The Ad-Hoc Committee didn't have that time because of, you know, how condensed it was. And finally, the process. Following my tenure on the Ad-Hoc Committee and experiences with Dick and Cynthia and their team, I was convinced before their appearance Tuesday night, that the Select Board had made a grave error in deciding to reopen any kind of level of new architect selection. Watching and listening to that meeting, I realized why I felt the decision to reopen the architect question was one of the worst decisions I remember the Select Board making in the thirty-one years I've lived here. When Owen had the courage and decency to ask point blank about what Reed and Company's decision would be if the architect selection process were thrown open again, my heart was in my throat, and Dick's answer brought tears to my eyes. Losing Reed and Company, the incredible library-building experience and library knowledge, their ethics, the commitment, knowing this project, the way they know it, with all its problems, would be, I think, a severe blow to the success of building a new Rockport library. Please let these experts and our own library director, who you all heard what he had to say about Ben, and he's worked with a lot of the best in the business, let them guide the library part of this process. And that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, excuse me, would, does anybody else like to make a, okay?
I think most of you know I'm Ames Curtis, a Rockport resident and voter. I have several talking points, some of which will be repetitive. You know I wanna go on record. First, Dick Reed and Cynthia Lobenstein were very poised, and I thought eloquent, in stating their positions about participating in continued work on a new Rockport public library. Their point about mediation is worth highlighting, but I personally believe the problem lies directly with the Select Board at this point, and not with the community. Select Boards waffled and pandered to special groups, reinvented the wheels after hard work by any number of committees and individuals. I would not replace Reed and Company as architects for a new public library. Instead, they should be given the assignment to do the assessment, concept design, floor plans for the R E S site, so we get a true comparison between the two sites. That's a small price to pay to satisfy residents on all sites and allow voters to make a genuine vote. Second, I believe the Select Board has taken advantage of, if not outright abused, the citizens that they've appointed on committees. Steering Committees spent months, hours, carefully evaluating a number of sites, including the former site, and very objectively, as well as unanimously selected, the R E S site. That's been ignored by the Select Board, claiming that the non-buying vote put the R E S site to rest, even though that vote was heavily influenced by the keep, improve, expand signs all over town, as well as the prematurity, because the independent engineering study had not been done. And that study clearly declared that building unrehabitable, unsafe, needing to be demolished, in fact, and they gave a figure, I think, of fifteen thousand to go ahead with the demolition. However, the Select Board then appointed the Ad-Hoc Committee and gave them a mandate to only consider the One Lime Rock Street site, plus a smaller square footage of programming space than had been recommended by the Library Committee, the Library Director, and the independent library consultant. That Committee, the Ad-Hoc Committee, also spent months doing the hard work that they were assigned, and they selected Reed and Company by a large margin. The vote failed for a variety of reasons that I don't believe a survey will pinpoint accurately. I think there are too many variables: location, size, cost, design, and more. Now, the Select Board has decided to go back to the drawing board and re-interview six of the former firms that had competed for the contract and had been rejected by the Ad-Hoc Committee. So I ask you, what citizen in their right mind is now willing to serve at the behest of the Select Board? Third, despite knowing the location of all the Bach heirs for months, thanks to Helen Shaw, the Select Board made no effort to contact them directly until recently, leaving the residents with the impression that they might have to give up One Lime Rock Street site in Memorial Park if the heirs reclaimed that property. Three or four weeks ago, finally, Rick Bates and Jeff Parker spoke with local heirs only, and they were, learned that those people were not interested in having the property returned. I think one indicated that they would like to see some public benefit from the property. But I don't understand why the Select Board wasn't in touch with all those heirs much earlier to take that issue off the table, so there could again be a true community appraisal of which site was best location for the library, without people believing if they did not put it at One Lime Rock Street, they would lose that property. I think that's negligent on the part of the Select Board. Finally, the Select Board said they would just simply take charge. They would resolve this issue by, they would make the decision for where the site was gonna be, how it was gonna happen. And so they've proceeded to reinvent the wheel, with the exception of it was clear it was One Lime Rock Street as the site location. That process has also been a charade. The majority of Select Board members have repeatedly pandered to a small group of inter-village residents. They've called on local experts to testify about attributes of each location or problems with each, but virtually all of those experts had previously made known their preference for the One Lime Rock Street location. It's hardly unbiased comparison. So, I do not believe that we can honestly trust the Select Board. I think there's a level of egocentricity that's become toxic and has contributed to the divisions in the community. I believe you're all well-meaning. You've certainly put in the hours, long meetings, numbers of meetings, but I don't believe you've shown leadership or vision for Rockport. And I think at times, you've negated democratic principles. I really want to stress that dedicated citizens have put in enormous amounts of time on this project, and I do not believe that should be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Pat Messler, Rockport. Pat Messler, Rockport. In November, I think you told me, there was about eighty-three or eighty-five percent of the population, eighty-three point five percent, I knew it was one of those numbers, came to the polls to vote. I think we all know the reason for that was not just the library, but probably mostly the presidential election. For the library vote, there was a thousand one hundred and fifty-one yes votes versus a thousand one hundred and sixty no votes. So, if there had been, so that's nine more noes than yeses. But in reality, I think of that as being pretty close to a draw. If five more people had voted yes, it would have been carried by one vote, which would have been very hard to raise money for. But it would have put things in a different perspective. The other night, Ken, you particularly, but I think everybody, was saying that they just didn't know the reasons why people voted no. And after talking to several different people, I think I have an idea. There were many reasons, and here's a list of what some people said. Some people said the building was just not attractive that was put up for the drawing, the drawings of the building. It had no curb appeal, which was the term that was used. Some people said that the four million dollar price tag was just too high, even though they were only being asked to vote on half that amount for a bond issue. Some people said the building was too large. But there were also people who said the building was too small, since the square footage was smaller than initially recommended by the Library Committee. Some people said there just wasn't enough parking. Some people said that the parking that had been designed wasn't safe or easily accessible to the building. What a lot of people used as a reason to vote no was the location. They believed that the town should build a new library on the West Street site, where there's enough space to accommodate parking, and whatever size building the architects design, where there's ample room to expand it, and when the time comes. Also, building at the old R E S site will not inconvenience the neighbors the way building at One Lamrock will. And it will preserve Memorial Park. Then there were some people who voted no, just because they didn't wanna see their taxes go up, no matter what was being proposed. So that's eight-plus different reasons, and there may be more that we could even brainstorm here tonight. But if the Select Board really wants to know how many people voted no, and for what reason, which is a different question than you were talking about, you will need to contact those people who voted in November... contact those people who voted in November and ask them how they voted and why. Now whether or not you'll get enough people to respond to such an inquiry in order to be statistically reliable is anyone's guess, but it sounds like it's a big job. Not impossible. We have a record in the town office of who voted in June or in November. You could send a card to each of those people, but is that really what we need to do to go forward?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make comment?
Paul Chavino from Pascal Avenue. Where to start? Watched the meeting from Tuesday night. Was doubly impressed again by Dick Reed and Cynthia. As I said to my wife after, they're the kind of people you'd like to get to know just as people, not just as architects. They are very, very impressive and lovely people. Regarding the question of opening up to other architects, I don't really know about that. I really am confused about that. I am sensitive to the fact that local architects, local Rockporters, local taxpayers have put in a lot of their own time to sketch what they would think might be a nice design. So there's something inside of me that says that they at least are entitled to the courtesy of a listen to. That doesn't mean that we're guaranteeing them or anything like that. They could be, you know, said, you know, that you'd have to be blown away by whatever they have before you would no longer consider Reed and Company. So again, I'm not saying that's what you ought to be doing, but I'm just telling you my own confusion around that question, because Reed and Company have certainly done outstanding work, and they showed that again on Tuesday night. In terms of the mediation, I always like to think it's never too late for mediation. I worked professionally as a mediator for 24 years, went all over the country doing that kind of work, did some extensive work with the United States Postal Service. Because of the expression going postal had them very, very nervous. So I have a great deal of experience when it comes to mediation and I think a fairly well-established reputation. The thing about mediation and different mediators have a different philosophy about that. That mediation, the purpose is to get people to reach an agreement. That may not be the best approach in all cases. For me, and having talked with people who've been in mediation and people who have expressed their appreciation for the experience of mediation, seldom had to do with whether or not they reached an agreement. It had to do with the fact that they felt that they had an opportunity to speak, that they were empowered to express themselves, themselves, that they didn't have a mouthpiece for them, that they had the opportunity to hear the other person in a new light, and that the other person had a chance to hear them in a new light, maybe for the first time. Okay? But mediation conversations for that to happen, sometimes are very, very difficult, and there's a lot of fire and discomfort. And you have to be willing to go through that fire to get to the other point where the person says, "I finally get what you were trying to say." That is the moment that people value in mediation. Even if there's no agreement at the end, at least there is a newfound respect for the other person's point of view, and the other person is no longer demonized. Okay? That's the value, and I would love to see that happen because there's been too much demonization going on since 2011 over this library. So take that for what that's worth. The question of a survey and all that, again, I don't know. When you first talked about it, I thought, seems to me we know instinctively why people voted the way they did. Few people in life, and I think when you think of your own decisions, you never make a decision based on one factor alone. There may be a dominant factor, but there are others as well. I mean, some people may have voted against the library because they didn't care for its appearance, but was that the primary reason? Okay? Because again, and it occurred to me after the meeting on Tuesday night, that a great deal of that conversation was what was around what we considered a tertiary consideration, and that was the aesthetics. I think most people in Rockport know that the aesthetics of the thing is a very subjective thing, and you're not going to get, you know, 95% agreement on aesthetics. People know that instinctively. Okay? But remember, the warrant article was about a bond issue. Did we want to raise $2 million bond? When I go to vote, I read what's on that line. Okay? And of course, implied with that was the building of a new library, that's what the bond was all about, but it was a $2 million bond. And if we think for one minute that cost wasn't the controlling factor in most people's decisions, I don't think we've been paying attention at all in the last few months to what people have been saying. There's all sort of anecdotal things that people say. Sure, people may not have liked the looks of it, there's, a lot of people didn't like the location. Okay? But a lot of people were really concerned about the dollar issue. And as, you know, Stevie said earlier, why does it have to be 50/50? Because if you recall, last spring, when we were talking about a bond issue, we were talking about a million, a million and a half. All of a sudden in August, that figure jumped to $2 million without any public explanation why it had gone up to 2 million. Okay? And I wonder if the reason it went up to 2 million was because the fundraising, that was putting a heck of a lot of, a bigger burden, if we were up to a $4 million library, a bigger burden on the fundraising, and so that maybe we could raise a little bit more from the taxpayers. So again, I just want to go back to what Stevie was saying about, you know, maybe a million and a half dollar bond might, or maybe a million and a quarter. Because at the, if we're going to build a new library and people had a real problem with $4 million, are they going to have less of a problem over $500,000 and you're going to build a $3.5 million library? I don't know. Okay? I can see a lot of people saying, "That's tokenism, $500,000 when it comes to that." That being what it is, I do want to take issue with some of the harshness that was addressed to you folks tonight. I have disagreed with a lot of stuff. I have gotten frustrated at a lot of select board meetings. But I am not quite ready to throw the aspersions upon you guys that were thrown upon you tonight. And I really, for myself, disagree completely with that. I think you guys have done your level best, trying to meet the interests and the concerns of all the parties. You have listened to everybody patiently. You have allowed this thing to go on and on and on, in my mind, that would be my criticism, in order to listen to people. And here we are again. And I also tried to alert you to the fact that a November vote, putting this as a November warrant, which is fine now, that's the case, and I accept that, but that is just giving more time to keep the argument going about the site and the location to wit tonight's meeting again. That whole question has not been put to rest and will not be put to rest. Okay? It will not be put to rest until the voters vote. Okay? And if there's a no vote in November, then you can start from scratch all over again. But what we need now is to bring people together. Okay? And that would be the ideal mediation thing, to get the parties, or the most vocal parties, together in a room and to talk a few times about it, and to try to understand why people feel as strongly as they do about what they're doing, and then to recognize that the other person is not the enemy, that they are equally concerned about building a good library in the proper space at a reasonable cost that is suitable for the town and the people of Rockport. Okay? And then we can get the enthusiasm behind whatever plan will be proposed, and once we have that enthusiasm, the fundraising will come. If it's another closed vote, we're up the creek. Okay? We're going to be up the creek in terms of fundraising. That's just the reality. Okay? So we need to try to get behind where we are right now. Where we are right now is to try to decide on a design and a cost that we really think the people of Rockport will endorse and support. And they will endorse and support that if people who are particularly involved in this issue support it as well and are vocal in their support and come together and work together, the people who were on opposite sides before can come together and be a strong, powerful voice for our new library. And that, I think, is what we should be striving for at this point, not just to keep the argument going again until the November vote. And so thank you for all your efforts and your patience with the people of Rockport. And of course, they've been patient with you too, and all of us are just human. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Does anyone else like to make a comment?
My name's Christine Sadie. I just had a couple of comments. I've been streaming or attending your meetings related to the issue for a couple of years, but also for a couple of weeks related to the architects. But first, a couple of comments related to specific things tonight. I would agree with what Pat said around, if you're going to survey, I think first of all, waiting to June seems late, and you're not going to get the same people that necessarily voted, or the number of people. So I think if you want to know November voters, try to get your November voters if you are going to do a survey. I'm not sure what you're going to do around a survey. If you can, contact those who voted in November, if that's allowed, that's who you should contact. If you can use those roles and exactly who voted. And then around what Stevie was saying about a number, I hear you a lot saying the 50/50 fundraising, and I agree, if it can be a higher amount privately raised, get that number down a little bit for the voters, because I'm real concerned about reducing the size of the library. And although we don't know without a survey what happened, I can tell you why I voted no, for three very specific reasons. One is you've told the ad hoc committee, they weren't going to reduce the, when you told volunteers to be on the committee, there was going to be a specific site and a specific size, and then the size was reduced by 1,500 square feet, and that was just too much for me. So I voted for it because it was too small. I didn't, I didn't like the fact that you chose a site in November of 2015 without really any discussion, and I went back to every single meeting you had that summer, including the workshops you had with the library committee. And you said you were going to have another meeting that fall, and you never had it. And I listened to every meeting you had. So you never gave it a full discussion, and you just chose it. So I felt you never gave that site good, good, real discussion. And you sort of ignored the steering committee report, which told you what was the best site. So then we fast forward to this winter, and we have a real chance to look at the sites again, and I'll have to say I was really disappointed in the process. And I think Brendan's no vote, when it came to the vote, really said it. He didn't vote no on One Lime Rock, he voted no on his disappointment in the process that he and the rest of the board did. And I'll have to agree, it was a very inadequate process, including what Ames said tonight. That BACH deed, deal that you were asked passionately, just passionately, by Peter Chamberlain. Go back to the workshop two years ago in July that you had with the library committee. Peter Chamberlain asked you passionately to do that deed, and he was ignored. People have asked you. And Owen, a couple meetings ago, you said you'll regret that you didn't work hard enough on that deed, and I'm sorry to say, you didn't work hard enough on that deed. And I'm really getting passionate tonight because you dropped the ball, folks, you did. And then a week before, you call up the locals, and then, gee, now people think we're going to lose the land because we waited three years to call people about it. That's just not a fair comparison. And of course, we're not going to give RES enough shake because we think we're going to lose the property. So I just think you took a really, a process that's very flawed, and I've heard you say a number of times recently, "Well, we, we took these last couple of months and we did a really fair process." I just don't think it was. So now we do have our site, I'm going to have to live with that, and I'm going to try really hard when I vote at the next time not to have it be about site, but it's going to be about size for me. And so I'd like you to go with Dick Reed, with Reed and Company. They did a good job. I don't think it was really their design. I think it was a lot of other issues, like maybe the enthusiasm. Maybe there's a divide in this town, but I'll have to say, the letter that our select board put out a couple of weeks before the election, the vote, you'll even agree, and you've said it in a meeting, there was not much enthusiasm in that letter. And if that letter was supposed to get our town excited for a yes vote, it didn't do it. And maybe that nine votes could have happened if there was a little more oomph in your letter. And maybe I'm being a little disrespectful tonight, but part of that divide could maybe be solved with a little more transparency that we were going to be seeing from this board, that you've also told us we were going to be seeing, and I'd like to see a little bit more. So my real message is, let's go with Reed, let's not open it up. If someone wanted to wow us, they would have wowed us last spring when they had the chance. There was six people, six firms that were chosen, the one that wowed us was Reed and Company. And that ad hoc committee did a ton of work, a ton of work, and I don't even think they were really thanked enough. When Jan got up here a few months back, that committee did a ton of work, and you notice the whole committee wasn't in the room, because I think they'd just been beat down. So go with, go with Reed, you've got some good people. I watched that meeting the other night, I couldn't be here in person, but I got home late, I watched it that night, and then I watched it again this morning. And I'd encourage you to go watch that meeting again, and watch the poise, the professionalism of those two people. Just watch what they did, they were incredible. And I would encourage you to hire them, and they'll do a good job for us. And they told you the conditions under which they'll work for us, and we're going to be lucky to get them, and I hope we can. And think about why it didn't pass, there's a lot of reasons. We may know them, we may not, but I think a lot of them have been expressed. We may not know all the numbers, what percent didn't like this or that, we know a lot of things. But for a heavy user of the library, I see Ben probably every week if I can, except when I broke my arm this winter, but I'm driving again, so now I'm seeing him again. I don't want to see the size cut. It is just, you should see what the other Ben does with a bunch of moms and kids and grandmas. We come and we got these little kids, and Ben's reading to all these moms. We need space for our kids in that library. And, you know, we can have this building over here, but it's not going to do what we need. And if we keep shaving down and saying, "Oh, we got to cross the street, we got to cross the street," it's not the same. It's just not the same. And if you have Dick keep shaving this building, and then you want your fundraisers to go and fundraise the money, it's not going to work. So I like Stevie's idea, go for a smaller amount maybe to the voters, but don't necessarily make that building a whole lot smaller. Maybe we could do a 60/40. So that's kind of my messages there. Let me see if there's anything else. They're experienced, they're professional, I know you have some local architects who want it, but they didn't win the vote, they didn't get it. And unless you're going to go out to a total new process, when you talk about, "Let's have a discussion, let's talk with them," that seems so loose, that seems like, what are you asking them? You're almost like handing it to the local person. What about the guy from Bar Harbor? What about the other people? What about the other 14? I think you either open it up fully, which I don't agree with, or don't. But when I hear about, "Come in and blow them away," that just doesn't go for me. And I think, I think that whole transparency thing, that doesn't sound very transparent. I think that's about it for me. Just don't cut the size, it's just too important. I think the whole Steve Poggeny thing, he told us what we need. That site that you're, we're going to build it on has huge challenges for size, so we keep making it smaller to fit. Let's, let's not cut it smaller right now. We've already cut it by a lot to the size it is, so let's keep Reed and Company and build ourselves a great library. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to talk about one quick thing, just because I think Bill and Rick certainly know about the ad hoc committee's process. And that's been one of the things that really upset me the most about redoing even the six who were selected at the end. You, you may not have realized what an incredible grid, or whatever, we created with the entire group of architects to come down to the six. Once we had the six, the piece that you may not know about, it wasn't just about their designs, or whatever. There were some things that got into the weeds, so to speak, where we went, we called town officials, we called library staff, library board members, we went to libraries that those six people had designed. And again, talked with House at Working, Dick mentioned the other night, I think we said when he went up, maybe it was the first time he went back into Cape Elizabeth. But the things that we got into, that you can't possibly know about, as far as things that we found out in talking to the people who paid for the libraries that these different architects designed, the problems, the design problems that they had. In what, in some cases, a lawsuit because of harassment. And when, and when we were selecting a team, what people have said here about the way Reed, Cynthia, and Dick presented themselves. Trust me, when we got down to those six, and I talked to Jan, and I, I think, I don't think he was right, and Ben may know, Brendan would have known. The impression for that committee was that when we came down to six, we had, we were told that the two local architects would be among those six. Not because they maybe scored enough points to be there, but because they were local. And the issues that arose as to one, as to the reason Reed was so favored, and some of the other firms, the other three, four, three firms, had to do with that extensive research we did in talking, and in many cases, we talked to libraries, I, I, for instance, was in charge of going to win Scotts and dealing with his issues, or with his library. The funny thing was, as much as Freeport absolutely loved him and would use him again, in fact, they're doing, I think, an expansion already. They, they talked about Dick Reed and his, his architectural firm, and they said, you should go to some of the libraries that Reed has designed. So, so I think, I don't know if you guys realized what an in-depth process that architectural search was. And particularly with, I always get my Eric's mixed up, Eric from the hospital, who had done so much work in this type of building situation, in a different setting, obviously. So it was not a light decision meant to eliminate anybody. It was a serious decision to choose the very best, what we felt was the very best firm. So, just a little background.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? All right. Thank you for that. I'm going to ask Rick over there, did anybody online send anything in?
Just one comment. Do you want me to read it?
One comment from Linda Passan. I believe the select board has gone out of their way to reach compromise and disagree with Ames's appraisal of the situation.
Okay. All right. Let's, now let's move on to our next item, which is the consideration of how to proceed. Ken, you mentioned to me that you would like to make a motion at this point.
Yeah, I want to make the motion that we rescind our motion of the other night, which was to consider the, the six finalists at this time.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay. And the reason I'm making it is, thank you for seconding. I don't disagree with anything that anybody has said about Dick Reed. I think that they have done a wonderful job for us, I think they're a fine firm. And I think they could be a fine firm for us moving forward. We've heard a lot of people speak glowingly about Dick Reed tonight. I have to say, we have also received emails from others in town, and one of the things I try to do on the select board is to listen to everybody. We have, I have received emails from some others who suggested a change. So I was trying to have a process where we continue to consider Dick, and in fact, I wanted, I wanted Dick to have the first spot, if you will, in the, in the hierarchy of things, but to also perhaps listen to some other ideas as well. And when we put that process in place, we were schooled pretty quickly on that from other architects. And we heard from some other architects who told us that they thought that Dick Reed was basically still the incumbent, and that we had to make a decision about Dick first before we go to them. And these were architects that were interested in the project. They were interested in doing things, and, and they said, you know, ethically, and that included some of the local ones who said ethically, you know, I can't step in until Dick Reed, it's not fair to Dick. So I'm the first to say, I don't know everything about this process. And, and we were schooled on that, I believe. And Dick has told us that, you know, he is willing to continue with us, but that if we open it up to others, that he will not be interested in continuing, even though we would like to continue to consider him. So I think, at the very least, this board needs to discuss that, the implications of, of making that decision. So basically, the decision I had hoped to make was to, to certainly consider Dick and consider Dick strongly, but to hear other ideas as well. And it appears now that we can't make the decision that way. We have to decide whether to continue with Dick or not before we, we have to basically decide that first. That has to be our first decision, and then if we decide not to, then we can go consider others. We don't have to make that decision right away. And Dick communicated with Rick, I believe, today, saying, you know, if, if we decide to, to move forward with some other work that we have to do, which Dick indicated the other night, the mediation process, if we decide to do a survey or something like that, that Dick is willing to, to wait for us to do that. And in fact, he told us the other night that he would want us to do that, have that process. So, you know, making this motion tonight to rescind that process that we put in place a week ago doesn't necessarily mean that we might not go back to that process at a future time. But for the time being, I make the motion mostly because I don't want Dick to be out of the process at this early point, and I want to allow us some time to figure out how we're going to proceed. And I'll, I'll stop there.
I, I agree with, with Ken on that, that this does not, by rescinding this vote does not mean that we may not want to come back in the future and, and go through it again. Well, I think the next couple of steps that we need to follow will tell us whether or not we want to remain with Dick. And as we come out of those processes, probably will give Dick the idea, or, you know, whether or not he wants to continue with us. It just, you know, by withdrawing this one motion that we've already made is to effectively just, you know, to use a phrase, you know, it'll keep our powder dry. We aren't shutting any doors, we're not pushing any doors open, we're trying to get that information that we need to figure out really where we want to go at this time. He made a lot of number, he made, Dick made a number of good bull and so to Cynthia the other night about how we really should be looking to go forward on this. I'd listed out seven or eight different steps that we might want to go through, you know, to get to a final vote, but just to get to whether we're, we want to, you know, look at the architect that we want for this, the mediation of some form, we need to consider how we'd want to go through that, and a survey of some form, if we want to go back and do that. But we need to get to the bottom of the argument as to what is separating the town, and how do we want to overcome that no vote? Change that no vote into a positive yes vote? So I'm, I'm all, you know, for this reconsideration.
So it seems to me that this particular motion is logically a motion that would come up after we talk about this last meeting, and after we talk about our relationship with Dick. To start off the conversation by retracting, we have just taken a significant amount of, of criticism, some of it earned and some of it misunderstood. One of the invectives hurled at us, which has some truth to it, is that we vacillate, we're wishy-washy. If we, Dick didn't ask us to rescind this motion, he asked us not to entertain other I don't see any, any harm in leaving that motion, which I basically forgotten about because we went off on this other direction, on the table till the end of this meeting, till the end of three meetings from now. It's, it doesn't seem to be an important thing to address, what we want to address is what is his ultimatums. And he gave us ultimatums, and, and he held the gun to our heads. But it doesn't make sense to start the meeting when, at the end of the meeting or three meetings from now, we might bring up the same motion and have it pass in the affirmative. So if you think it's strong on a procedural standpoint, I'll consider that, but I, I don't know. I, I think it's inappropriately timed.
My thoughts are also a little bit on procedure. You know, I was going to ask logically, what would the motion be that follows this motion? And would it be to retain Dick Reed so we could start exploring options with him as, as a named architect again that we give money to? So procedurally, if, if we need Reed and Company to start moving forward on it, because I'm, I'm, have been perfectly happy with Reed and Company and the work that they did, and they just reinforced that to me the other night, that they have a great relationship with a lot of folks they worked with. They were, I was very, very impressed with the candor, and, you know, I didn't feel like they were holding anything back, which was very useful, very helpful, and trying to, you know, dancing around a topic doesn't really get you much. So it's more just a question of, do we need to name Reed and Company as our preferred and desired architect to, to start moving forward on certain things? Because if we do, then we, we should rescind our last week's motion and make another motion to have Reed and Company. But if we don't, and we're still able to work with them as we, as we go through these first couple of weeks, then I'm, I'm a bit of where Jeff's at, which is, at the end of the day, I'm going to fall where I think Reed and Company is a great person, so I don't really mind this, but do, do we need to do it now? I just don't know.
I think from a procedural perspective, that not taking the vote to at least rescind, to speak to the others, when we meet again, let's say on the 24th, somebody could come in and say, how come you haven't entered, introduced the others yet? Because you were going to, you had a motion that said you were going to interview the other five. If the motion is still there, it's still valid, and we should be following that. Otherwise, I think, you know, we're not saying we're not going to do it down the road, and by rescinding it, it doesn't say that we're going to have to take another vote right away saying Dick is our preferred architect, because as he said the other night, you know, he's willing to, you know, to stay in there, you know, if we ask him for advice, he's at, he'll be willing to give that.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would maintain that, you know, we have a contract with Reed and Company, and until we dissolve that relationship, he's, you know, he is the architect we're using. Until we, until the board decides that they want to change, change horses, he is the architect that, that we've contracted with.
Was there any sort of end date on, on that contract? It was an open?
It's, it's, it's to work with us on the design of a library, yeah. You know, you certainly can, can do whatever you'd like, and, you know, that, I think that was the problem that the other architects had, is he's, until, until a board says that he's no longer our architect, that they had a problem with coming in and doing a presentation when we already have a contract with him. And, you know, so I, I, I think you're, you're, you're in, in good ground, at least, to, to sit in idle with that. It depends on what steps you want to make. If you, if you, you know, if you are in part of the process where you don't need an architect for some of the, you know, for the survey, the, the architect's not going to do the survey, the architect is not going to be involved in any mediation, you know, that's not, that's not work an architect does unless it's like me and my wife and designing the, an addition on the back of the house, but they're not, that's not what they do. So it depends on which direction you go, and you may know further, as Jeff's saying, further in this discussion, there may be some decisions you have to make.
To answer Owen's question, I, I don't think the follow-on motion is immediately to reappoint Dick. As Dick told us, we have some work to do before he's going to be ready to work for us. What I think this motion would do is put the brakes on the process. I think, as Bill noted, you know, we have a motion on the table, we may have some of the other architects who, you know, some architects said they wouldn't jump in until, until we had, our relationship with Dick had ended. Others didn't necessarily say that. So we may get some pressure saying, you know, why aren't you coming along? But I think by passing this motion, we at least send a signal to Dick that we heard what he had to say, and that we're going to move forward on some other fronts before we make the final decision on who we are going to hire. And so I think that that's a, that's the reason for making it, I think, because I think we have, we had a process, we suggested a process the other night, we're now basically going to change that process, I think, as we discuss this stuff and, and the points that Dick made, and, and slow down a little bit. So that's my reason for the motion.
Does, do either of you two gentlemen in the middle find any merit in Mr. Parker's desire to entertain this motion, but at the end of the meeting? Just throwing it out there.
You could table the motion.
Table the motion, sure. I, I think we do need to act on it tonight.
No, no, I agree with you, for sure.
I think we act on it tonight, and if you want to, if we want to have the discussion go in, in terms of the other points that Dick raised, I'm happy to, to move to table the motion and.
And I mean, I guess it's, I feel like I heard from everyone that they were comfortable with Reed and Company, but we just, we hadn't necessarily kind of formally did that.
Well, I'll move to table the motion.
Second.
Discussion on the tabling? Jeff, you, I thought, wanted to say something before that point was raised. No? Okay. All in favor of tabling to the end of the meeting? All right. I'll, I'll kick this off. What I had heard and what my notes sort of showed, that we need to start with two issues or two processes. One, do we want to do mediation? Two, do we want to do a survey? Those, you know, to me, Dick made it very clear, Dick and Cynthia, that we really needed to do those before we tried to move further on the design of a library, that we needed to get, bring the town together. As, as one person pointed out, there's a great deal of acrimony, that Dick, Dick pointed that out, that he was surprised at the amount of that, that was there, that, but then, you know, my question on that is, will it do any good? Will minds be opened or changed? So, you know, those are issues. So, you know, those are issues, thoughts that we need to consider, as well as if we do want to do that, where are we gonna find the moderator? You know, Paul, we know, has been a professional moderator.
Mediator, not moderator.
Mediator, mediator.
Mediating moderator.
Okay, you know, but, you know, where do we need to look for somebody who will be perceived as being a fair, unbiased person?
Well, before we get into that, I, I think I, my perception of, of Dick's using the term mediation was not necessarily the strict definition of mediation, as, as Paul talked about tonight, but rather some kind of process to find some common ground in the town and to, and to dissolve the acrimony, whether it's strictly mediation or some other process that I, I'm not an expert in that, I don't know. But I think that's, I think that he wants, if he were gonna continue with us, he would want to come into a less contentious environment than he found as he went through the process the last time. That's, that's what I heard from that, whether it's strictly a mediation process or some other process. I don't, I don't know what the other process might be, but, but I think he told us that we need help, and I agree with that, because, you know, having listened to people and, and listened to them again tonight, I mean, there's still a lot of division in the town about this process, about the subject. I think we have to get to someplace where we can get a majority of the townspeople to say, I agree that we need a new library of X square feet, whether that, whatever that number is, period. I don't care where it is. And for some, some people, that's a long way off right now. And if, if we can get to that, to get people to agree, yes, we need a new library, it has to be this certain size, period. And, and if we can meet that agreement, then I don't care where you build it, whether it's on One Lime Rock or whether it's on the RES site or even someplace else in town that we haven't thought of yet. But if, if, if the agreement that we need a new library always comes attached to where we put it, then we have a problem. And, and I don't know, you know, I, I throw my hands up like Paul did. I, I don't know how we get there. I really don't. We need help. We need professionals' help.
Yeah, at least.
Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I submit to you that we're taking these in the wrong order.
Okay.
I submit to you that the first thing we should be talking about is gaining knowledge. Everybody who spoke in this room, including ourselves, are limited by the blinders that represent our experience. Paul gets up and says, look, you polite dummies, thank you for your, your positive comments, by the way, it's all about money. Ames gets up and says, it's all about RES. You know, other people get up, it's all about size. People voted, they voted basically even, we don't know why they voted. And I think it's imperative, i- i- if, if, if we were, if, if this were a couple going to, for mediation on any issue, or, or, or two bodies, the very first thing they would do is assess where they were. Each of them would say, this is my point of view, this is where I'm at. This is my point of view, this is where I'm at. That's the statements, the initial statements, that then the professionally trained person would then say, oh, by the way, do you recognize that there's common ground here? Oh, maybe I don't care where it is, or, you know, any of these things. But that's, we have never seen, we have, all of us are guessing why people voted no, all of us are guessing why people voted yes. And, and I think it's worth every bit of, of $5,000 to find out as well as we can. And, and I just simply won't brook the, the sniping that.
Sorry, I was just lighting in the mode. Keep talking, please.
I, it, you know, the naysayers who say, oh, surveys aren't accurate, oh, nobody will respond to it, that's, you know, if, if you wanna, if you go into it, the disposition, you won't believe what, what there's, what, what the result is. But we can design with professional help, we can design a survey that people can't take twice, that's really simple, really simple. We can develop a survey that has the questions that are structured in a way that we understand what people did. And by golly, if people don't want to fill it out, if we hand it to them on a, on a silver platter and they don't want to fill it out, I'm not interested in talking to those people. You know, it's, if, it's purely anonymous, it's all that, and if you don't want to be represented and you don't want to be part of the conversation, don't be part of the conversation, but don't come back later and say, and say, moan and moan. Am I okay, Dick? Can I, can I use moan and moan?
You can use moan and moan.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I mean, I agree with Jeff. I, I think one of the challenges for, for Dick going in, and for anybody, is knowing, understanding, you know, we all have our gut feelings, but having the data behind it to, to back it up is important. But I, you know, I, I think there's a sent, a feeling that the survey is equated to voting, so that it had, that, you know, the professional now, it's just information. A professional that designs it is gonna be able to analyze and say, you know, it's not like this is winning because it has this number of people, this is winning. It's, it's about trends and, you know, they, they, professionals can do that. And we, we should not be doing that work or even attempting to do that. It, it should be done by a professional and, and it's not, it's not that finite, well, this one won by three votes and so that's the winner, that's the direction we're going. You know, they, they, they develop the survey with a lot of different ways of asking the same question to, to gauge trends and, and it's, and, sorry, Stevie, to develop it properly, to mail it out, maybe $500, but the work of developing it is gonna be thousands. And, and then how we, how we collect it, how people can participate in it, I would say you'd want to make sure that you allow a lot of different methods of, of participation, because people do, people will want to participate different, in different means.
Yeah, and, and for the record, I think the survey is part of the mediation process.
Well, I agree.
So I think, you know, to, you know, it's part of this whole process of figuring out what people want and things like that. And I, I, I was a proponent of a survey back right after the vote failed. And I was really disappointed when I heard several people from the public step to the podium and say that they thought, not only they thought, think a survey was a bad idea, if people think that, that's okay, but for people to say, it doesn't matter what the survey says, I'm not gonna believe it, that really disappointed me. And that made me back away from, at that time, saying, well, why am I bothering? And I think at that time, there was a little bit more, I, I think things have quieted down a little bit since then, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I think. Yeah, I actually do. I think, I think there's some distance before, I think, you know, we heard some, you know, some strong sentiments tonight, but not quite with the vitriol for the most part that, that we have heard before. So I do think that that's the first step, is, is gathering information as part of the mediation process and as a survey. And I also, I want to make it clear, because a couple of people tonight, we were throwing around ideas the other night and, and, and very preliminary discussions, talked about handing it out of the polls and stuff like that. I want to be very clear that I would not limit it to that at all. I would make it open to any resident of the town who wants to take the survey and whether we, we can have it on paper, we can have it online, but basically, we want to cast as wide a net as possible. And one of the questions on the survey can very well be, did you vote in November of 2016 and how did you vote and why did you vote that way? Or did you not vote? Why did you not vote? Or do you have a different opinion now? I mean, all kinds of information can be gathered that way. So I don't want to limit it to the people who vote in June, I don't want to limit it even to the people who voted last November. I want to find out, I want to, it would be, it would be nice to know if, if as part of the process, we can find out why people voted the way they did in November, then that's great. But I think we can gather additional information as well.
Sort of a tangent here. The Midco Solid Waste, the Waste Watchers group over there put together a survey using Google Survey. I'd not seen it before. They've had over 1,100 responses on that. So, but, you know, I'm just pointing out, you know, that doesn't reach everybody though, because not everybody, I was over at the Legislative Policy Committee meeting and we had a couple that said, if you want to survey us, I don't do email, I don't, I'm, I'm not online, you're gonna have to mail it to me. So, you know, we, we've got to address those. You know, maybe, you know, your idea, I, you know, struck me as very good, to, you know, hand them out, but at the same time, we need to have other ways of getting it to people.
So I'm not a professional in figuring out how to limit it to one survey per person. But I'm sorry, is that a comment that we should all hear or is that a comment that?
I asked that same question when I tried to do the survey online twice.
Okay. Okay, but that's, that's the easy one. You, you change over to, to Alan's computer and you could vote.
No, I guess he doesn't, he doesn't have one.
But what I'm saying is, I have five computers in my house, I could vote five times, because that's just an IP thing. So, so that, I, I'm not sure, if 85% of the enrolled voters voted in November, if we were to go to those 85% that voted, who presumably, how many non-votes, how many, how many people of those 20, some hundred people did not vote for?
Library.
Library, either pro, for or against.
Just blanked it.
The blank ones, there was possibly.
She doesn't even have a mic next to her, so she shews microphones.
Yeah.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, okay. Never blanked, all right. But I'm not sure why we wouldn't be, if we went to those, all those people, I mean, we could go to the vote, I, I don't really care, but, and I understand that there's lots of different ways to fill it out. But it seems to me that we should ask the professionals how to do this. I'll shut up. We should ask the professionals.
I think that's right. I think you're right there.
All right, so you want nobody you ever heard of, nobody who lives in town, nobody from anywhere, we'll, we'll do that, that's fine. Portland, all right? Is Portland all right? I mean, we already burned one person at the, at the state, so we can, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting edgy here because, because it's, I'll go take my question.
There are professionals in the state or if we want to reach out to New Hampshire or Boston, I'm sure we'll find them.
It's gonna frickin' Mexico.
It, so on that note, since we're gonna be flying people in from Mexico, what's our?
Mexico, Maine?
What's our?
They don't even have an airport.
They'll go to Rumford. What's our budget for this? I'm all about it. I, I, I don't need to comment more on the survey and stuff like that, you all covered it. What's our budget?
You don't have any money budgeted.
Okay, so can we talk about what we're gonna actually need and?
I have no clue.
Because all these ideas are great, I just want to make sure that we're not getting people's hopes up and then all of a sudden it's, well, we didn't, we couldn't find four grand to hire someone.
That was something I was gonna raise as part of this and the, and the mediation, is how much is it gonna cost and where's that money gonna come from? Because we haven't really budgeted anything for next, you know, nothing left from this year, or maybe a little bit left this year. We would have to, what?
We have money in the, in the design line for the library. It seems to me that this, you know, could come from that. And, and, and that's the other thing we have to talk about, is the timeline. I don't know if it's enough. I mean, I think we had 26,000, I think, in that line, I think, in the budget, and I'm not, I may be remembering the numbers wrong, and I think there's some money left from this year that we can encumber or whatever, so. And I don't know whether in this next fiscal year, we're gonna get to the heavy lifting of the architectural work or not. I mean, I think from Dick's conversation the other night, he seemed to indicate that we may be more than a year away from that. And so I would.
No, let's be clear, he, he, he had, he talked about a process with Cape Elizabeth where they were hired to do the entire interior. And Dick said three really off-the-wall things, but, but he, for somehow, he, they passed the library without elevations. That's not gonna happen in Rockport.
Not now.
So, you know, and, but, but that whole year was, was a year where, where they were, you know, raising money and doing other stuff, but, but that wasn't, that wasn't analogous to our situation.
Well, they went through, they went through a couple of steps, or at least one step, before they even brought in Reed. And that was after the initial vote had failed.
But I guess my only takeaway is that I think the timeline for this is longer than we had been previously thinking. And so that's, that's why I say, you know, that we may have money in an architectural line that we may not need for architectural purposes until another fiscal year.
Well, if you're gonna go out, if you were thinking about going out past next June, then you'd be budgeting for the architectural work in the 19, 19 budget instead of the 18 budget.
That's next June, huh?
If you, that's, because.
I'm just letting it soak in. I'm not saying it's the wrong approach.
If your goal is, you know, if you're saying, your goal is to get something to the voters on June, in June, you're gonna have to spend money in next June, not this June, next June. You're gonna have to spend money on architect design sometime after January in the same, the same fiscal year. So you're gonna have to have money for, for mediation, for some, some market analysis or survey, and then some, and for the architect. I, I have no, we have a person that does mediation in the audience, you know, what's something like that likely to cost, Paul?
Well, I was just thinking about that a little bit.
Would you say?
It's hard to predict, because most mediators will charge by the hour. And of course, the other key question is, who are going, who's gonna be at the table? And the larger the group, most mediators will ask for a second mediator, a co-mediator, if it's a really large group. Now, for example, I know someone here in Maine who mediated the dispute in Denver about the development of the airport and the neighbors, okay? Now, that was a lot of people in the room and there were two mediators, and that went on for months, okay? So the, the, if you want to talk about the mediation, and I'm gonna have to leave shortly, but if you want to talk about the, the mediation, I think one of the things you need to consider is, who's gonna be at the table? Who's gonna be invited? How's that decision gonna be made? And do you want to limit the number of participants? Because the more people at the mediation table, the longer it's gonna take and the, the more complex it's gonna be. And then limiting the number is a risky thing too, because people will feel they have been excluded. So that, that is a real difficult question, and I can't, and, and then I think in, in your minds, you need to be clear about what your purpose of the mediation is. Because again, as I say, if your purpose is to expect that at the end of the mediation session, everybody's gonna come out in agreement, I think that may not be, that would be money wasted. If your expectation is, is that people can come out with a greater respect and understanding of the other person's point of view and a willingness to become on board, whatever the final outcome is at a vote, that would be a major accomplishment. But in terms of what the cost is gonna be, hard to tell. I mean, it's, it's gonna be at least a couple of thousand dollars at a minimum, and then it could go up to 10.
Bill, could I address the financial piece as a library committee?
Please, please step on up.
And I address the, the finances because we've had this discussion on the library committee. I'm on my second term. And you know, Bill, we have a very, we just had the report, the Putnam report, which I think all of you maybe got copies. And what's happened with Megan, we've been able, and with Putnam, we have a very clear delineation of which of those library funds, many of us make unencumbered donations to that library every year. And the library committee has already discussed the possibility of, with some of these, now two more freaky expenses that weren't there, the possibility of being able to contribute, you know, we had the grant for the 15,000, the library committee has already spent some of, some money from that fund. And Paul would be happy to talk to you at some point about the charge to the library committee with that trust fund. That trust fund is not just comprised of encumbered donations and funds, there is discretionary money. And Putnam told us at the last meeting that we had with them, we're taking out for our monthly draw, less of a percentage than is usually rec, that can be recommended, we're at the low end of what is recommended you withdraw from an account. We're at the low end of what is recommended you withdraw from an account. So, you know, I, we, it would have to go to the treasurer, to Anne, who's our chair, obviously, in the discussion with you and with Megan and other people. But I don't think you should ignore the fact that there might be a possibility of some funding from the library committee legally.
Thank you.
And thank you. But I would add, at the same time, we can't presume that the money would be there.
Yeah, and there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot to answer, and, you know. It's, it, it does seem like, you know, to, for those two functions, you could have something between ten and twenty thousand dollars that you're gonna be allocating. And I, my recommendation would be to not shortchange it and make sure we, I, I think we get one shot at this. And if we're gonna do it, we wanna make sure we do it right. And, um, and I, and, and I'm gonna go back to Paul. I mean, how, it would seem, and I'm not a mediator, but it would seem like the mediator having good information in hand, uh, it would be helpful to have had that, that information in hand before you start that mediation to get into, um, you know, the questions of, you know, that, that they're gonna have to mediate through. It would be more helpful for them to have, you know, some research and some analysis other than our gut, you know, our collective gut feelings.
I, I only put mediation first because it was mentioned first. Then you got the other issues, so that's the only reason I put it down in that order.
But I, I think you'd be looking at, you know, ten to twenty thousand dollars to, to, to do it right.
Is that including the survey and the whole umbrella mediation process?
And that's just, without me talking to anybody other than a couple texts from a friend online about what it would cost.
Is there any way? I was just gonna ask if there's any way between now and next Tuesday when we have to put our budget articles to rest, that you could perhaps get at least some rough numbers.
I will work really hard on that.
And so that we know what we have and.
I, I sent out some feelers today to potential mediators and, and potentially Paul can point me in a direction of others. And also for potential, uh, marketing, market analysis places. I mean, I, we can just go online and throw a dart, or would we be better off, you know, contacting some people and getting some recommendations of what firms around? Most of them are gonna be located in the Portland area, I think, but.
So, all I wanted to throw out there, and I don't, I don't wanna stop for progress or anything, but I just think it's, it's worth recognizing that the group of folks that are in town that don't wanna see their taxes up and don't want a library are just gonna be even more upset that we're talking about spending up to twenty thou, and again, and I, I, I do think it's necessary, but I just wanted to get that out there because I, the feedback I get from folks sometimes is we, you're not hearing us. We don't, we don't even want a library.
Right.
The people that don't come to this meeting, that aren't passionate about it, that are civic-minded folks, which does make it a little confusing sometimes. These are good community members. You know, their rationales typically, there's the library in Rockland, there's a library in Camden, we don't need a library, don't make my taxes go up. So I just wanted to, I just felt it was necessary to throw it out.
The thing about the survey and the thing about facts is that everybody knows where they sit. You know, those people who say, I am so pissed off that it's not RES, I'll never vote for anything except RES, they'll know where they sit. And, and we, we can only guess, is that twenty percent of the town? Is that sixty percent of the town? We don't know. They don't know. Nobody knows. And so everybody, as I say, everybody, not necessarily blinders, this, that's their experience. And, and, and so that's what they consider. And, and something's near and dear to them, they'll say, well, that's obviously why all of my friends, you know, and we, we've had people on three different sides of this say, well, it's very obvious. No, it's not.
I think, and I, oh, because I just, I thought it was so great when you were talking about, you know, us wrapping our head around, I think Pat put it perfectly. We know exactly why it failed. And she laid out eight different reasons, you know? Each one is weighed differently with the individual. Someone maybe just didn't necessarily like it, but the cost was a big thing, or, and it just, that's, that's how clear it is. You know? We know why it failed. There's at least eight different reasons. So like, figure yourselves out and stop being so wishy-washy. And it's like, I wish it was so simple.
And you can take the opposite side, and we know why people voted for it.
Because of those same issues.
And that's, I mean, that's, that's would be an important part of a survey too, is we wanna find out why people voted yes. And, and I can, or exactly, why, why people didn't vote at all, why, why people couldn't choose. But I mean, we can speculate that some people voted yes because they thought the design was wonderful, and it was the perfect-sized library for Rockport, and as Ben says, the, the perfect library for Rockport. We can sense, we can guess that some people voted yes because, you know what? I'm tired of this, and I want it to be over. We don't know. The same way as we don't know why people voted no. And so gathering that information, I think, is extremely important.
Can I throw out a thought? Maybe I'll kinda direct this towards Jeff, um, and into all others too. Do you think that, Kenny had said, or someone said, you know, the surveys could be part of the mediation process? Or you're kind of viewing in that same light?
It's the first step.
So would, would, what we would be shooting for is to get a survey out, try to wait until we hit a percentage point that we had agreed upon was when we would kind of say, okay, we've gotten a good sample size. And, and then with that data, do we roll into mediation? Or do we attempt to, to start the mediation process while we're gathering that data? I would, I would be more inclined to try to put the efforts towards the survey, crafting a professional survey and the questions, and making sure we really engage the entire community on, alright, we're trying version three or four point O. And when we're done gathering your feedback, we're gonna go through this additional process more in-person to display what we found and try to get feedback from that.
The, the survey is the feedback. And the, the next step, and I think to answer your question, it's when all of those, all the surveys are back.
You can't, you can't do that. You have to, like, once we hit seventy percent.
When, when we, yeah, I mean, we have, you have a deadline on the survey. That's when they're back. You have it in by this day or, or tough luck. And that then, because we don't want a shifting base of information. So that's our base of information. And, and to, and I don't know if we fleshed out the idea of, of why the survey in and of itself, in some of its crafting, can be an entree to, uh, a, a mediation environment. But there are ways to post questions and there are ways to, you can, you can outright invite the person, say, would you, would you come to a meeting that went over all these things and, 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 you know, wherein you had a voice and wherein you were listened to other people? Most everybody is good at having a voice, and not necessarily the same people are good at, at having, using their two ears as opposed to their one mouth. So, um, but, but it could, it could create the environment, and it could create the notice, and it could, you know, all of that stuff. So, but to answer, I, I think you have the deadline of the, of the thing, and then on that. The other thing to be aware of is that in this town, there was, you know, we'll go back to the comp plan, that that was a very successful from the numbers. But the long handwritten notes were three hundred percent more effort on the, on the, the people who are compiling it, and informational. You know, that was more important, were the, were the notes. So, so, you know, again, I, I think hopefully what'll happen is we'll have a workshop where we will create our questions, create parenthetically why we thought those are good things to know, and then hand all that stuff off to a professional. Because a professional is going to want to, I assume, is gonna want to have, uh, the narrative on how we got to this point. And, and the professional will also weed out editorialized questions, you know? How can you possibly think this? Check yes or no? So, um, but that in and of itself is, is a fair amount of work that will, you know, take another two or three meetings or workshops on our part, to, let's pretend, to get, to get that ball rolling. But I would like to suggest that we start off, we start with the concept that we're gonna add twenty thousand dollars to our budget for survey and, uh, some sort of mediative, uh, action.
There was a point, excuse me, there was a point raised tonight, and I'm gonna, I'm, I'm building on what you just said. When we were doing our consensus votes, I entered, entertained, or I introduced the idea that maybe we wanted to put money in to clear the Bach deed. What I'm hearing tonight is that, you know, we may be gonna be rethinking the location. Well, because that's what part of the survey is gonna be.
Yeah, we, we have, we have to consider that.
Maybe, you know, we should be putting that money in as well to do that. Even if we, and this is the argument I, I used that night, even if we stay at one lime rock, we still need a resolution, and it's gonna be cheaper to do that resolution now than wait fifty years when we're looking at it, when our, our.
That's fine. I, I do have to, now that you brought up the subject, I do have to challenge the mind-reading ability of some of our detractors. I, you know, I have no doubt that the Bach family would say, oh, you like to put a library there? Keep it for a start. That didn't influence my decision at all, and to be, to be.
And I'm not saying it.
No, I know. I'm, I'm just, I'm talking to those people who are sure that they can read my mind. And, and that didn't enter it at all. So, you know, I was not worried that we hadn't gone further down the line.
Keep personalities out.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Bring us back on to the topic here.
There you go. Thank you.
And maybe to counter that, I was, I'm not gonna lie, that really weighed on me heavily, the potential to lose both of those sites. And that's why I did say it was probably, and I typically don't regret things. I'm, I'm a, that was so, that was so yesterday, or whatever. But that's, that's like the biggest regret that I have, being on this board, that in the very beginning, I started asking some questions and I didn't fully follow that line through.
But yes, I, I agree and would support with you to go and clear that all the way up. That's fine.
Okay. Have we come to a consensus without taking a vote, that we are gonna do a survey? We need to find somebody to construct that survey. How do we want to garner input to what goes into that survey?
We do it.
We do it.
We do it.
Yeah. Yeah. We craft the questions that we think.
If we don't know what the big, what the big points are, then we've not been paying attention.
I meant to bring it tonight, and I forgot, but right after the election, I, I handed out to everybody.
I would strongly recommend that, that what you, what you really need to do is to, to say, these are the things we need answers for, and let the professional craft the question.
And all I, all I was alluding to was when we're working with the professional, it's just us. In an open, transparent meeting where we, where everyone can hear what it is we're talking about, but not to cloud things with, with opening it up to the public. They're, they're typically gonna say the exact same things that we know, we, we've heard and read their emails.
Okay. How do we want to get this ball rolling?
Take a vote.
I'm sorry, what?
Take a vote.
Take a vote.
Ooh, one thing, because I just really wanted to throw it out. I think I brought up at the last meeting, I'm such a visual person, and especially when you start talking about like things that are a year out. I'm like a, figure out when you wanna be done by, and then work backwards from there. And I'm not saying we have to do that tonight, but when Jeff brought up workshop, I know you were, it was more of a, a survey workshop. But at some point, just for me as a visual person, I'd love to be able to see that. Where are benchmarks? What do we need to have accomplished? Almost that Gantt chart of make sure you're doing this while you're, to prepare for the next stage. But until I can really see all that, it's difficult for me to be like, oh yeah, a month is.
Well, I, I wanna be kind of a counter to that, because that's what we did with the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee, was we laid out a deadline and then backed up to it, and, you know.
Well, we, we learned, we learned our lesson on that.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm talking about fourteen, sixteen month.
So, I would.
With checkpoints.
Sure. Well, I, I would propose to you that, that we can do, we can certainly do what we feel are our priorities, what goes first, what goes second. I think we're already talking about that. But I think we need to rely on or at least ask the question, I, I think the next thing we do is to become aligned with a team that can do a survey. Ask them how the best way to go about it is. And ask them, is it mailing? Is it combination? Is it five different ways, or is it one different way? I, I'm not particularly wedded to the idea of the voting, but it's very clean. And, and it, and it gets people in it. It says, look, voting is not only a right, it's a responsibility. Absentee, mail them one, you know, uh, get in there, hand them one. That's just really clean. But, um, we can, uh, and, and then if you didn't get one, call us up and we'll give you one because your name's not voted, checked off of the thing. That's fine, by me. But we could take some guidance on that. Uh, we could, we could find out what they, what the professionals feel. Because it's in their best interest to have, to have us get as large a return as we can.
Well, I'm thinking about a motion without making the motion. To move us forward would be to perhaps, uh, direct the town manager to do a little research and come back to us by next Tuesday with some budget numbers for at least the survey part and maybe the mediation part too.
Because you're gonna need something to put in the budget.
Right. And so, you know, if we make that, if, if I make that motion, and I won't make it yet just to see what, what other, I'll, I'll run it up the flagpole and see, see what people think. And if nobody shoots it down, then I'll make it. But I, I wanna make sure from Rick's point of view, that, that we're not putting too much on your shoulders, you know?
We can get, at least get into a better number, you know, I, I can.
Perhaps you can find, you know, what, a handful of firms or whatever that might be able to do it, and, and without, uh, and, and I don't know whether we wanna do a full, you know, RFP for this, or, or if we can just.
I can't see without my glasses.
You know? But that's something we can talk about. I mean, the, the deadline, and talk about Owen's deadline, deadline we have right now is we've got to propose a budget and vote on it next Tuesday. And so, I think that's, that's what we need to do, so.
And, and I wanna, I wanna say that, that going to this whole idea of a survey, we're not looking for duck and cover. We are, you know, we've sort of reached our threshold about, of, of everybody assuming one thing or another or another. This is just, this is the foundational way that we're gonna move forward. We're not being wimps and, and oh my God, the select board's gonna do a stupid survey. This is, I feel that this is creating the foundation for the remainder of the conversation.
I mean, for me, I want a new library, period, in Rockport. I want a new library. I want a good library. And to, to have that accomplished, I think we have a, a majority of people in town who probably want that. But how we get there, that's what we're gonna find out, I think, is how do we get there? So that's, that's, that's my base reason for doing this. I want a new library in Rockport. It says who we are as a town in a lot, in a lot of ways.
Well, I think, I think the vote really showed that, that we had forty-nine point eight percent who said yes. And then we know there was a, probably a sizable proportion of those that said no, that want a new library, they just didn't want how we had proposed it, whether it was location, cost, or whatever. They're still in favor of a library.
So I propose that that's the last time that any of us says, well, I think that this is what. No, it's just that we're, we're being guilty of the same thing I'm, I'm saying other people are doing.
Can I just say one thing? Just, just to close it out. I guess one perspective that I had not heard before was Chris Sadies tonight saying that she voted against it because it was too small.
Well, I've heard that from several people.
I really hadn't heard that from, because I talked with a ton of people, and it was typically almost the exact opposite. Maybe it was the folks I was running across. I don't know.
Again, that's what we're gonna find out. Well, I will move to direct the town manager to do some research and come back with proposed budget numbers for survey and mediation services in time for our meeting next Tuesday.
Second.
Moving seconded. Um, would you entertain a friendly amendment to include a cost estimate for clearing the Bach deed?
I just, I sent an email to the lawyer right now. That, I just sent him an email a few minutes ago to get an estimate of that.
Oh, alright, then. I don't need to make the amendment. Motion has been made in seconded for the discussion. All in favor? Let's do that. Um, we had tabled a motion earlier. Do we want to withdraw it? Or do we want to? Or do we want to move it forward at this point? That was Ken's motion.
Yeah, I had a different topic.
Alright, then.
I just, I didn't wanna lose, I just didn't wanna lose this thought. A lot of what we tend to talk about at critical times is our inability to, to properly engage with the citizenry. And I know it's an amalgamation of a lot of different things, it, it may be a Rockland model with trained professional help on how to engage with people. But one thing that would be cheap, simple, and very intimate with the citizens is, I'm gonna throw out the idea, and I typically try not to give myself any extra work than I already have. But I think if monthly, every individual select board member wrote a letter, so this, this would be my month, and then next month would be Bill's month, and then Ken's, and then Jeff's, and we write a letter to the editor that we give to the local papers from an individual perspective, how, this is what we're, this is what happened at the last meeting, here's where we're thinking we're gonna go, and look forward to your next Rockport Select Board Individual Update next month. And until we get this damn library thing figured out, we keep doing it. I can go way worse than that.
I know you can, you're a marine.
And a commercial fisherman, and a construction worker. I've worked really hard at learning how to, yeah, talk without swearing. And I, I'll, I, I'd be happy to volunteer for the first month if, unless someone else wanted to do it.
I think that's a great idea.
You know, what a way to, and try to, people could be looking for it, and then they can respond to us individually, and it really shows that we're, we're at least trying.
It's tough.
But we're trying.
Okay.
I'll, I'll have my hackles down by then.
So I'm gonna move to pull from the table my motion. To, to remove from the table, in other words, to bring it back into consideration.
Oh.
Oh.
I like that.
Yes, well, the correct motion is to lay on the table and then to, to pull off the table.
We're pulling it off the table, I'll second that. We have the motion on the floor.
Don't you need the original seconds, is it?
Nope.
No, no.
It's a new, it's a new motion.
A new motion, it's to remove, motion is to remove. We did set a deadline that we had, had, we were gonna do it today, so.
Google search of Robert's rules.
Don't, please.
No, that's right, that's fine.
Yep, okay. All in favor of removing it now from the table?
Removing?
In other words, bringing it back into consideration, yes.
Okay, we now have the mo, Ken's motion to rescind our earlier vote.
And I'm still gonna argue in favor of that motion, because I believe that we have now set in place a process to move forward and, and, uh, I think it's better to let that process play out and then find out where we are at the end of that. And that process may take many months, uh, between doing a survey and doing a mediation and things of that nature. I think that process is gonna take a while, and I, I would feel better about taking that earlier motion. It's not to say that we can't do it again in the future at some point, once we have the information and we've gone through the mediation. At that point, we may come back and the mediation may tell us, that may tell us which direction to go, but I think it's better at this point to, to, to rescind that earlier motion.
Only because I'm an extremely transparent person. You, what do you think? You like this? You like what we're doing here? I looked to Ben for a lot of stuff, Ben follows, Ben has followed this stuff.
They're putting him on the spot.
If you, if you wanna, if you're gonna speak in response to him.
Feel free to say no comment.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna make a comment on that.
Okay. You just nod and wink.
Politicians, no comment.
Ben has made it very clear in the past that he enjoys working with Dick. And one of the things I think, and that this, we'll send a, a message to Dick that we heard him the other night. And he told us, he said, we may decide at some point to go in a direction with a different architect, and, and he'll be okay with that. But I think for now, it keeps him, um, in play a little more than might otherwise be the case. And, you know, Jeff's comment, he put a gun to his head, our head, yes he did. He has the right to do that. We can respond however we feel like we need to respond. And I, my response has, has been all along that I wanted Dick to be a part of this, a part of our process to go through, I didn't wanna lose him at the beginning.
Just for the record, I've always hated that term.
Was that put a gun to your head?
Yeah, it's a horrible term.
I apologize for using it.
It's all good.
Okay.
He gave us ultimatums. I'm gonna have to vote against it, uh, because A, I don't think we've done any discussion about that meeting on Tuesday that leads us to one, one conclusion or the other. So I think it's premature, I still think it's premature. I also am respecting your, the desire to get out of here at nine o'clock tonight and not eleven. So I, I'm happy to have the conversation later on and entertain that motion again, but I will, uh, at this point, uh, vote against it because, because I don't think we've even discussed the, the basis of it, the relative merit.
And before I call for a vote, I wanna ask this question. We have right now still scheduled meetings for Monday, the twenty-fourth, and Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. Do you, you know, and I'd like, I know, we have to, we have to have a meeting on Monday, the twenty-fourth, because we have some other issues that have crept in that we thought, oh, we only need to have one meet, one real select board meeting this month, but we've got a couple other issues that have come up that we need to handle on the twenty-fourth. Do we want to start that meeting with a discussion about what transpired last Tu, this past Tuesday?
Can I just throw this out there? It, for me, this is just a me thing, my, my kids are already in bed. So, I'm fine staying, if, if others want to discuss, it's still fresh in our memory, I'm happy to stay for another half an hour, forty minutes to.
Yeah, don't, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Staying another half.
Would that, in kind of looking.
I don't wanna stay a long hours of the night, but.
To, to Jeff, would that be, would that make you more comfortable to potentially have that vote at the end of this meeting?
Well, I think, I think a, after we assess the meeting, I think it's appropriate, it's, it's more appropriate to have the vote then, so, sure.
And I didn't know that there was a nine o'clock goal, a goal.
It was a goal for me, but I, I understand that that's unrealistic.
Then do we wanna put this motion back on the table?
Lay on the table.
Lay it on the table? Or do we just wanna leave it in abeyance and hold a discussion on a separate topic?
Massive discussion.
Well, I mean, I think that, I, I guess, I guess I'm not sure where the discussion about the meeting Tuesday night is gonna go. And is, is it in terms of, do we wanna continue using Reed, or do we wanna?
Unfortunately, he made it, he made it so that, that is part and parcel of, of the, the decision. But, but I would like to go over the meeting and, and, and assess what happened, and then I would like to discuss whether it is appropriate for us at this time, because it is a watershed time to look at alternatives. And if we wanna open it up to every architect in the world, that's, that's fine, but I, I think that this is a golden opportunity to be responsible. We, we've opened up every single other aspect of it. Why is it that we're, you know, not opening up the architect and the, and the design? I mean, and I say that absolutely with total respect for Dick, he did a great job on what he's done so far, it's valuable information. If we were to have a different architect come in, they will use that. It would be absolutely silly for them to throw it away. And it represents hours and hours and hours of discussing with Ben and with the Ad Hoc Library Committee, et cetera. But this is a new board, this is a different board that sees things differently, why would we, if we had the opportunity to at least, I'm not saying choose, but Dick is saying choose, Dick is saying we can't look at any other architect or have any other discussions, he'll walk. And I don't know where that comes from, but it, it, it doesn't seem like an appropriate restriction to put on ourselves considering all the other considerations. If we had, and contrary to what some people think, I think that the eight or ten weeks that we looked at all of the aspects and, and, and got this board up to speed, uh, on all the, all the elements of the, of the two different sites, I think we made that site with, there was one board member who, who felt otherwise, but I think we made that site choice without any undue influence, without any nefariousness, without the other thing. And, um, if we had chosen RES, that would have put Dick in exactly the same position that all these other architects would be. He would have to start new, except with the basis of what he's already, um, done in terms of relationship of programmatic material and adjacency and that sort of thing. So, um, we would be, we would be singing a different tune if we were at, we were at RES. And would have to be because.
But we're not.
But.
We're at One Lime Rock.
Okay.
But we mean that.
Having gone through the, we, we went to One Lime Rock, in my mind, independent of, well, no, it wasn't independent, because we knew that Ben, what, there was a library design that Ben and the Library Committee and the Ad Hoc Committee were all, said this could do it. You know, Ben's comment was, this works for me, am I, am I correct? Am I being, okay, so, the other thing that, well, so we know that that site works parking, gotta deal with that a little bit more, things like that, but we're not, I'm, I'm running out of steam here, uh, it's been a long week so far.
Do you, do you want me to, to flap my face for a little bit?
Please, I'm, I'm, I yield to the.
Only if that's an, if, are we, are we appropriately talking about the meeting with Dick? Cause one of the things I wanted to say is, okay, cause you said.
What did you say?
Why are we doing this? Why, why, for me, I can tell you why I had been advocating for just keeping with Dick Reed and not opening it back up. And it's for a handful of reasons. One reason is, we did end up selecting the One Lime Rock site. And so here's a person who worked extremely hard with many various folks and organizations and ad hoc groups within the town to understand that site, understand its nuances, and put together a preliminary plan. And so I felt that, you know, even though that plan failed, here was an obvious choice to continue the work that they had done. A second reason was, I didn't necessarily feel that the failure of the vote fell on Dick Reed and Cynthia and the design that they proposed. A third reason was the extraordinary amount of work that the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee put into selecting, uh, an architectural firm. That was, that was not light work, and I don't think that they took it lightly. And I felt very comfortable with the person that they selected, became more comfortable with the person that they selected from seeing presentations after they'd been working with folks. And other than some just very minor things, uh, from the meeting on Tuesday, what day is today?
Today's Thursday.
I feel even more comfortable with them. And it's not anything against the skills and abilities of the other folks in town, or the other firms outside of town. Uh, I'm very appreciative of the time and energy that folks have done on their own accord to work up some designs and sketches. I just feel that we have a capable architect, they were selected through a great, robust process, we're still on the same dang site. Let's just continue forward, learning from what the mistakes were last time. And for me, a good portion of it is, this is just a personal opinion, I really don't feel that the, the failure of the vote fell much at all on the architectural firm that we selected.
To a certain extent, we've already talked about the meeting Tuesday night, because, uh, Dick brought up the point of the fact that the town needs mediation. We need to do this process, and we've already, we've voted to initiate that. So we've already taken, to a certain extent, some of his advice at that meeting. And so I feel that this motion to, to rescind the previous motion at this point is not abandoning it necessarily, but it's just stepping back to do this process. I, I do feel that it would be inappropriate during the survey and mediation process to talk to other architects. And I, quite honestly, we're not gonna talk to Dick during that process either. We're gonna, we're gonna do that process and we're gonna, we're gonna find out information and stuff like that. And so we'll be, we're basically pushing off our decision on an architect until, uh, we finish this process, which I'm guessing is gonna be many months. And so the reason for, for doing the motion is to do, is to do just that, to say, okay, we put a process in place a couple of weeks ago, we're now stepping back from that process. We've agreed as a board to do that, we've agreed to step back from that process and to move forward with, with the survey mediation process. So it seems to me entirely appropriate to pull back the decision on the architect, whether you consider it a decision to, to consider all six or a decision to say yes or no to Dick. We're, that's the reason for my motion, and I, and I, I do feel that I want Dick to be a part of the process going forward as, as long as we possibly can and, and, and to, to consider that, so, um, that's the reason for the motion.
The only thing I would disagree with you there on Ken is when you said that Dick would not be involved in our upcoming steps. We might wanna ask him to review the survey, or. We're, we're looking for facts. He can assist maybe in telling us, what are, are we missing a question or two?
Quite honestly, I'm guessing if we asked him that, he would decline.
Yeah, and, and he's, he's already indicated that that's not his, I mean, he, he, they hated the, uh, the focus groups.
Okay, yeah, I, I know that, and they made it very clear that they were, the focus groups were really no, no assistance. But otherwise, I, I agree with you, you know, and with that, you know, as you, you responded to me, okay, I'm fine with that too. I just, I just, I just think we wanna hold, you know, the issue of the architects until we find the facts. You know, let's get these facts together, cause that may change our mind in some of our, in some of the decisions that we have made, or, you know.
Could change in either direction.
Yeah, it could change, you know, a lot of things.
So I would be happy to, oh, did you wanna jump in?
I just wanted to, just wanted to ask, are we having a conversation about?
I don't know.
The Green Company and Cynthia, or are we having a conversation about the motion?
Well, I could go back to the motion.
I thought, I thought if we, if we went over the Tuesday meeting, it would, it would do clarity about whether or not we feel comfortable moving forward on.
Well, unlike Ken, I don't think we'd be, we'd even begun to go over the Tuesday meeting. But my comment is, is I would be happy to not discuss architects for another three months. But I would not be happy, I won't vote for this, this motion. If we just leave everything status quo, Dick didn't ask us to rescind this motion, he just said, you know, don't, don't take action. I will promise to take notes on, and, and when we get, when we do then start talking about architects again, there are some things, or we talk about it tonight. But, um, but if we wanna just put off all, talk about architects, and we go and we, and we establish these facts, and we establish a better working, uh, relationship with the citizens, then, uh, then we can get back on track talking about architects, talking about designs.
Does it concern you at all the thing that was brought up earlier in the meeting about some of those architects that we did contact? And if they ask us why we have not brought them in? Cause you said about roughly three months, but I think the motion was to, the previous motion last week was to bring them in within the next couple of weeks.
Well, I, I think, and I wanna clear up something, the architects that are interested in rejoining are, there's three additional firms, it's not just two local firms. There are three additional firms who have made, uh, contact with us that they are interested. I think in, in, uh, in the spirit of, of making forward progress, I'm willing to just shut my mouth. And, uh, and I think that those architects that are interested, interested enough to, uh, to hang on will watch this meeting and will understand what we're doing.
We'll hopefully get an email from Rick, cause I doubt they're gonna watch the meeting.
You don't know, we don't know.
I, I would be disappointed if they didn't, or, or, but.
I'd be surprised if an architectural firm in Portland's watching our meeting, but you never know.
No, the, the, the three, there's, there's, there's a Camden firm, and a Rockport firm, and a Bar Harbor firm that are interested, that have, that have, any others?
That's it.
Yeah, yeah, so, we're not talking Portland.
I'm not as concerned with what the other architectural firms are, are thinking or worrying about. We heard very loudly tonight, we didn't follow the process we set out to do. And now we have. And now we have already taken a vote. That we were going to interview the other, the other architects, or at least invite them in for a discussion. And if we don't take action on that motion, somebody's going to be standing at that podium. And saying, how come we're not following our own process? That's, that's my fear. And then we will spend your half of a meeting defending our choices. You know.
Do you want to take a quick timeout and then come back and talk about Tuesday? Take a quick breather? Didn't, didn't you say maybe?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I needed a bio break, but.
Yeah. And then maybe we could come back and just talk about Tuesday and our interactions with Dick and Cynthia.
Ken?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we'll take, uh. We'll take a two-minute break.
So maybe it'll get sick.
The other night, we took a three-minute and it was seven minutes. That's why we're taking a two-minute break.
We ready?
We have a good time.
Maybe not.
We do.
Okay, uh, come on, we're back here. How long do you think our discussion would, would continue if we were to go back and rehash Tuesday night? Um, because, you know, we, we do need to get out of here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have eight minutes of bloviating to do.
Bloviate away.
At least, at least I'm honest.
I'm not the person that uses bloviate a lot.
Uh, but again, as I say, I'm perfectly willing to put this off several meetings, uh, if, if you want.
I'm going to lose it all out of my brain bucket if we do that.
If, you know, if you go, go deep, okay. So from my point of view. Can we, can we hold a meeting?
Jeff, before you go into your.
My bloviation?
Your points of view.
Yeah.
Um, Ken, do you just want to table the motion again and, and bring this back up when we're fresh on next, uh. On the 24th, a week from Monday?
You don't have to beat him up. I'm, I'm fine.
I think the discussion is appropriate to the motion. So I can, I think that talking about the meeting Tuesday night is appropriate to the motion that's on the table. So, or in, in, under consideration, so I'll just leave it under consideration for the time being.
Bloviate away.
Bloviate away, okay.
Even though you're going to lose your mind.
No, no, he's going to lose his mind if it, if it goes, if we don't.
I was just going to lose all the things that I have in my mind.
Oh, if we waited.
If we waited, I wouldn't be so fresh.
I apologize.
I misunderstood.
No, no, no. Okay. Jeff, bloviate.
So, um, great respect for Dick. He's done a great job. He is, he is the library interior expert. In, you know, he has the most amount of experience. It's not to say that the other firms don't have library experience. But he's, he's, he's the, the good vet and, um, and he did very well by us. And he took a, a program that, you know, Steve's figures of 12 plus worked it down to eighty-seven fifty-ish and, and people are happy. And, um. Kudos for that. I think it's all right for us to say that he's very, very good at library interiors. And in my opinion, not so good at curb appeal. Looking at his other, his other work, not so good at curb appeal, all the way along, along the line. Um. Interestingly enough, he, having employed architects myself. Um, the architects that I've dealt with are the opposite of what Dick is. Uh, which is to say they experience their creations from the outside in. That's their imprintor as you drive down the street. And, and I had a six-month discussion with an architect about my house. Which, you know, he wanted to bring the eaves down to the street level because everybody's house was there. And I said, look, I want this to be an, an old sea captain's home. Bring it up. And he says, oh, you know, finally. Uh, and now my house looks like it's the oldest one and not because it's falling down, but from a design standpoint. So my limited experience with architects is that the exterior look is. One of the three big points, you know, what's it like on the inside? What's it like on the outside? And is the client happy or whatever the third we want to do? To hear him say downplay the exterior to the point of, of being able to, and I'm not sure how. In Cape Elizabeth, to have people vote on something when they didn't even see an elevation, obviously would not work in Rockport. You know, especially now as, as the voice on my right said before. Um, was very interesting. If we, if we use that as the benchmark, you know, that he takes his grandson to Cape Elizabeth to this event. And everybody's happy and he sees how, you know, the kids are very, very comfortable in that space. Again, that means he's done really, really well on the interior. But taking what he said at the meeting. And applying it to Rockport, all the people that drive down Pascal Avenue and loudly dislike that house. Would. Put them inside. It's a beautiful experience. You're looking out through all this glass. You see the harbor. You'd have to accept that house. You know, that's what, that's what Dick is saying. He's saying it doesn't matter what that house looks like. When you get inside and you experience that transparency of, of being inside yet outside and all the things that that architect did with that. You'd have to say, I like that house. Yet there are a whole bunch of people here who verbally, very loudly, I should say vocally, do not like that house. So there's a disconnect there that I can't understand. And, and my only press to at least look at other people's talents. Is that the curb appeal does not do it for me. Now, much like I give somebody in the audience who comes to the podium and talks, I give them the benefit of the doubt and say, if that person's thinking that. There's probably a hundred and fifty or three hundred people in town thinking the same thing that we're not hearing from. I got to imagine that if I think that the curb appeal was not that great, there's got to be a bunch of people that feel that way. So it's not going to get any better. He said it's not going to get any better. He sat there and said, we did pretty well. I don't understand the voters. And I'll let you jump in in a minute, but, but this, this is my interpretation of what I heard. Um, and. So I, I don't know that he's going to be able to give us, you know, I think. There's the possibility. Now, I'm not against opening it up and then finding out that, you know what? He stills the best, even for the curb appeal. I'm not, I'm not against that, but I think that we're shortchanging ourselves tremendously if we don't give ourselves that opportunity. I yield to the other side of the table.
I only wanted to ask some questions that maybe you could elaborate on. So I did hear some of the things that you also heard. Um, about a downplaying of the exterior and an upplaying of the interior. Um, but I also felt like I heard him say. And, and he was downplaying it, but look, I can decorate the exterior of this thing if you want me to. If, if you want me to, it's, it's like a cake. I make a delicious cake. And everyone who takes a bite of that cake is going to say that's a delicious cake. But if what you want to see is an exterior foofy cake with a bunch of stuff on it, like I can decorate that cake. But what matters to him is the flavor of that cake and what that does to your soul and your body when you eat it. Um, so that was, that was one thing that I felt like they could do that if that's more of a charge that we gave to them. But on a, on a compressed timeframe, I felt that the cake decoration did take a, a backseat. And I felt appropriately so under time constraints. And the other thing that I just wanted you to, to maybe reflect on, at one point on Tuesday, we talked about. I, I feel like I talked about it anyway, trying to wrap my own head around. Do we as a board need to change the conversation? And have it be more stressed on the interior? Cause they spent so much time on the interior to get it to all make sense. And then people look at it and go, oh, it makes sense. Now let me focus on what the outside looks like and, and spend a lot of time on that. And that's, we can do a redirect on that if we're cognizant of it and try to. Appropriately shape a conversation to discuss more about the functionality of it, the overlays.
So I, I think, I mean, I think what you're doing is flipping into PR mode. The, and, and I'm sorry that some people in, in the town feels that we haven't thanked the ad hoc committee for what they've done. They did a terrific job on a lot of stuff. They did a very terrific job on getting Reed and on, on creating the atmosphere and the dialogue and everything that got to where he got on the interior. But you, the massing of the building, we're not talking about just the treatment. We're not talking about granite versus brick versus clabs. Because the mass of the building is such that it is a certain shape. And that's what they're staying with and they, they admitted that. You can, and, and we're not wasting money if in the end we go with somebody else. Because that relationship, the conversations, all of that stuff has been done very, very well. That will become the well source from, for anybody if, if they come after Reed and company. But to o- only sell the interior, again, back to the house that some people really don't like. You would never go inside that house. You would never experience that because you're so put off by the outside. I'm not saying it's to that extent, even though I blithely said, you know, I, I, I would, I would go for a. I'd be interested in seeing, I said at the last meeting, I'd be interested in seeing a glass and steel structure. I would be. I think there's some beautiful, beautiful modern architecture out there. I would never vote for it for Rockport, for a library. But, um. But I'm not, again, that kind of, uh, that kind of architecture. Something that's not visually, and I won't say exciting because that gets into the wow factor. I don't think that's what we're talking about. But something that feels disjointed. Is not inviting and therefore you might never even find yourself inside to, to then experience the brilliance that's inside.
I guess I would only challenge that because that's where the books are. So you're going to go in to get a book and you're going to learn to love the place. Like randomly, people don't randomly drive by and go, that building's so awesome. I'm going to go inside and find a library. Wow, so cool.
They could. We could have a building like that. We could have a building that's, we're not going to, but we could. I mean, there are places that, that aspire to the extra time, money, this, that, and the other thing. To have a building that people come from, from all over to experience the building. I had the pleasure of talking, of interviewing Mr. Beinecke of the Beinecke Library of Yale. I did a show for Yale. And, you know, he was so pleased, not in an egotistical way, but he was so pleased that his library is referenced. Not only for having an incredible rare books thing, but because of the art that that building exudes. You know, it is a piece of art. So there are certainly. If we had a benefactor that said, here's $10 million, make a library that people in, in, in Switzerland will come to see, we can do that. And they would come, they would come, not because that's where the books are. So in a, in, that's one way far end of the spectrum. But in presenting a building to the public from the facade, from the outside, I think we can do better. And if it means we have to entertain other people's notions. And one of the other things that he poo-pooed was, was something that, that, and I'm going to change it a little bit. But there have been members of the audience who have said, do a full design build out on, on each site, okay? That will give us satisfaction. We'll be able to say this or that. There may be some wisdom to that. But there may be some wisdom to having five different designs for this one site that we've chosen. That's what. Looking at other architects' ideas will give us. It gives us something to compare it with. And because they're going to take the same program, square footage, adjacency, relationships. One floor, two floors, any of that, and they're going to run it through their experience, their creativity. And it's going to appear very, very different, yet on the inside, it's going to build on, on Reed's brilliance. If it doesn't, we don't choose it. But I'm just not sure why we're limiting our choices.
Couple of things that I'd like to point out before going into mine. In Cape Elizabeth, it wasn't a new building.
It was a rehab.
It was a rehab of an existing building that the town valued very highly as an architectural gem. So he didn't worry about, didn't need to worry about the exterior elevations. They just came about. It was the interior designs that made everybody wow. So, um.
Well, again, points to his brilliance. Again, points to his brilliance on understanding libraries.
Yeah. A lot of these things that we've gone through already tonight, so I'm not gonna, you know, reiterate them, you know, I think it would be, you know, inappropriate of us to not work through all of our other issues before we got to deciding on whether or not we wanted to retain Dick, that, you know, making a statement upfront here is that, "Well, you know, we really wanna look at other architects." You know, it goes back to, you know, what several people say, "Wishy-washy," well, that's the same thing. You know, if, you know, for now, Dick is our architect of record, and I, you know, I think it's appropriate that it remain that way until we come to the point where, okay, here's what we now want, can you do this? And we gotta figure out how we're gonna get there, you know, surveys are one thing. You know, he did, you know, it was pointed out a couple of times, the focus groups were totally unproductive. So, that's, you know, again, I'll go back to what I started the meeting at, is what I got was a sense of order, that he was saying that we should progress, and that started mediation survey, which order, how we do it, maybe conjunction, doesn't matter. But then, going back to the way they did it in Cape Elizabeth, is that they had a planning session, and then they created a budget, and then they brought in the architect and told him, "You need to work within this budget." We effectively, you know, for the best part, have that planning done, we know what spaces that we want, what programs we want to be able to accommodate, you know, we need to figure out what that budget is, because that can tell Dick whether or not it's doable or not. You know, we have heard tonight, you know, that, you know, it doesn't have to be fifty-fifty, well, I think we already had addressed that, that a couple of, when we did our straw poll thing, you know, when we gave the ranges, and, you know, a couple said, a couple of us, I remember, said, "Well, you know, not necessarily fifty-fifty, maybe, you know, you know, one-point-seven-five, and two-point-five, or something like that." You know, there was a, a spread, there was, there was, that wasn't a fifty-fifty split, so, you know, that's a, you know, good idea to understand, and maybe we wanna continue that, but, you know, he also suggested that when we do the architect, we also bring in somebody that would be the construction manager to be able to keep the cost aspects forefront in the mind, which triggered my, my memory is that we were also, you know, it was also recommended that we have somebody to do that communication marketing at that, at about the same time, and to have the capital campaign people involved at that time, so that they can be working their side of the, the road. So, as, as we move through that detailed design, and, you know, yes, at Cape Elizabeth, they took it right down to the detailed interior drawings, so they knew what kind of carpet and what the color of the carpet and what the window treatments were, and how high the bookshelves were, what the bookshelves looked like, what the wall treatments looked like, what the chairs looked like, you know, we needed, I think we wanted, you know, figure out where, how far we wanna go down that, because that dictates the cost.
By the way, I think we were willing to hire a construction manager at the same time that they did, they just went and spent that money prior to voting, and we, and we were on the same track, but we just said, "Vote first."
Okay.
And then, and then...
Well, yeah, 'cause they took their, they, they went to the design drawings, where we only went to the...
They spent, they spent a lot of money before the vote.
Yes.
And as Dick said, he said they were fairly confident that they could pass something, and that's, he said, and he told us, he says, "That's a risk, you know, we could do that, but that's a risk." We then spent a lot of money, and, and if it doesn't pass...
Well, but again, the survey will be able to give us facts that should be able to tell us, you know, are we gonna be able to switch that to a sixty, forty plus, a positive vote, 'cause if we're confident we can do that, then we could be confident in spending more money to get more details.
Well, I think the...
Yeah, yeah, that was what I took away.
I mean, I, to go through what Jeff talked about up at the meeting on Tuesday, you know, Reed did say that, you know, he does design from the inside out, and his form follows function, that's what he talked about, and I think, you know, with a library, that's not necessarily inappropriate. We did hear from people that the curb appeal wasn't what they liked, from some people, some people thought it was okay. I guess we would have to decide, you know, do we think that, that Dick and his firm is capable of coming up with a curb appeal that we, that the town would like, and, and that's, that's hard to know, but I do think that the, the survey process and the mediation process that we've set in, at least beginning in motion tonight, is gonna help inform us as to where we wanna go with the selection of an architect. And so, you know, I'll go back to my motions on the table, it's just, it's really sort of taking that decision and pushing it ahead a few months, because the decision is, you know, with, the decision that we are faced with is choosing yes or no on Dick first. By, if we decide to talk to others, then we've made that decision, based on what Dick said, and he has every right to do that, and based on what the other architects told us as far as ethics are concerned as well. As I say, we were schooled in that in the last week.
But that was from a contractual standpoint, if he was still on contract, which, which he is, they would, they would wait until he, he stepped out of that contract.
Right.
Or we terminated it.
Right.
Sure.
But that's the decision we're faced with, is to make that decision up or down on, on Dick Reed and his firm first.
Building on this discussion and our time with Dick and Cynthia on Tuesday, one of the things, Jeff, that you brought up recently was, you know, the exterior, and, and I understand, if money was no object, I would love to have a beautiful work of art for the town to be very proud of. Art typically costs a lot of money, and especially hearing as much as I did about the cost of this library and just who I am personally, I really resonated with a lot of what Dick and Cynthia were saying about the, the building from the inside out, because if you, if you provide, you know, we all have the same end goal of a good library for our community, and then what is good is, is very much interpretation. For me, I want a good library that Ben and Company can go to work every day, being proud that they work there, the kids, the adults, everyone has their own place, it flows good, and for me, the exterior is, is very much, not very much, but pretty much an afterthought for me, but this is just me personally, and hearing as much as I heard from, from the town, you know, financially as palatable as we can get it, as soon as you start upping that wow factor and that curb appeal, then you don't necessarily have to sacrifice anything on the inside, and we can still have a great interior library, but the more you decorate that cake, that's just, it's more and more money, and then all of a sudden, it's almost, it's almost counter, you'll get some more people with that, "Wow, that's such a great thing," but you'll lose more people because it's, it's up to the, potentially, potentially up the, the cost.
But they have the same, but any other architect coming to us will have the same budget, and they will be under the same, we won't accept something that costs the same but has a thousand square foot less because the money has gone into something else, it won't happen. So, again, the, the same caveat has been true all the way through, ad hoc committee was not designers, we're not designers, so, to make that, that announcement or that pronouncement that a good-looking building costs more, or an art, a piece of art building costs more, we're not in a position to do that, we have no evidence one way or the other.
I, I feel like I'm in a pretty decent position to say that, that a building that exteriorly blows you away by and large costs more money, I don't think that that's an unreasonable statement. I have worked on houses that blow you away, and if you look at the cost of them, you will also be blown away, and then I've worked on other houses that were much smaller, a lot more modest, the interior was beautiful, they wanted some nice stonework, but the price tag was far less. One house you look at and you go, "Wow, that is an amazing structure that someone sunk gobs of money into," and another structure that will stand up for time and all eternity.
So, would you agree that over the course of many months, Dick and his firm did some magic by taking Steve Poggeney's, "We gotta have twelve thousand square feet," to, "Ben, I like it, I love it, I can live with it," eighty-five-hundred, didn't, wasn't that architectural magic that we are not capable of?
Sure.
So, why is it that another firm or team couldn't come to us with a library that has the same value, the same square footage, that, and maybe it's not materials, maybe it, it's, it's, it's about creative ability, that's, and, and, and it, and I don't think it costs more, I think we can demand that it doesn't cost more, but without going and looking around, there is no, there is no choice, there is, there is no, you know, there is, there is nothing to look at and we can, you know, be convinced one way or the other for the rest of our lives.
Bill, could I be out of order for a minute? We're, we're talking about...
You, you're gonna have to come up to the microphone, are we good with this? We've done it in the past.
Because this is just so unfair, Dick has done thirty-one libraries, he also talked about the beauty of the exterior of Carabasit, have you seen...
I have seen it.
Have you gone to his all thirty-one?
Wait, 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 we're not gonna get into an argument here.
Okay, no, all right, Bill, I'm sorry, I just, I just feel like, to say he's not concerned about the exterior is totally false, if you go to the thirty libraries this man has designed, and you visit them, and you see the exterior within budgets, I think you are just being grossly unfair to what he is capable of doing, and doing a tremendous disservice to his firm.
Thank you, Stevie. We're not gonna get into arguments, hey, do you wanna say something, Jeff? Or do you wanna say something first, Ken?
The, the good thing about this board is that we have different viewpoints, so, we're just talking about those viewpoints.
Go ahead. Have we done bloviating?
I'm, I'm pretty much done, I think.
You've bloviated out?
We still have the motion on the table. Do we have any further discussion before we call a vote on the motion?
What?
We're still in discussion.
Tony, off.
One thing that I did appreciate, and I just feel like it's worth reiterating, was I felt like I got to see a little bit of a different side of Dick last night, he's a very quiet, kind of reserved person, and I really enjoyed seeing him be blunt with us, and tell us what some of the critical issues were that he had observed, and I think that that knowledge will be very useful for us going forward. And I've been speaking a lot about the, the positives, if I do have to have one critique, it's, I guess I didn't hear a good reinforcement on the parking, you know, I guess I, maybe we, maybe I should've asked some more probing questions about that, I'm, I'm relatively sure that they're very capable of putting some brain power to that, maybe that was the one thing that was lacking, 'cause that seemed to be a pretty decent issue with the library, so maybe if there was one critical critique, it was, I just wasn't blown away by that aspect of it. Did anyone, did I miss, did I miss?
I mean, I think we, we told him that, you know, he could use more of the park if he needed to, but I, he didn't necessarily address how he would do that, and I don't know that he was necessarily gonna do that.
Wasn't in a good position to, but...
That wasn't the tone of the conversation.
Yeah. Okay. Are we ready to call the vote?
Sure.
All right. All in favor of the motion to rescind our earlier motion? And opposed? And I will call by, wrote by name, Cassas?
Yes.
Barker?
No, thank you.
McKinley?
Yes.
Chapman, yes. Three, one.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, no, no. We need to take picture.
We do. One that's in focus this time.
Shall I move to adjourn?
I wanted to get, say that, though, before we make sure, I made another, okay, yep.
Hey, Ben, you wanna take this one?
No, I can take it, you just didn't tell me to focus.
Okay, okay.
No, I can take it.
We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
No, second.
Second. I heard him. You can put your hand down now.
I was stretching.